Where do you think you'll stand for the most part?
Um, probably right in here.
Okay.
I'll try not to walk around too much.
We'll put a little X on the floor. You can only go within seventy feet.
Yeah, tell me how far I can go so I don't completely walk.
Um, about right there.
Okay.
About as far as you want to go.
And then around.
And then about right there, yeah.
Okay, I can deal with that.
That's a small piece in there.
You'll be in frame.
Put a little electrical fence in for you.
Be like to the right.
That's right.
To the right.
That's right.
And they'll be like, what's wrong with him? Why does he keep jumping like that?
What's that song that they play at every wedding?
Oh, the.
I think we have probably everyone we're gonna get. I'm sorry for such a small group, but like I said,
It's, oh, it's fine.
The main purpose is we're trying to build a library, so.
Maybe we have more people, but our radios are down.
Oh, your radios are down?
Yes, so Ed's in there taking care of that. Mark's in there helping. I should be in there helping, but I really want to take some time.
Well, that would be, that would be, that, that explains why nobody else is in here.
Yep.
That's not good.
I think Raylene's down in Denver with Debbie.
Yes, yep.
Yep.
I don't know, they were doing a, oh, what was that?
It's a public safety forum.
Yes.
He was there, he was teaching there.
Oh.
He came right up here afterwards.
See, they should just come with him.
That's what I said.
So what you're telling us is it's over and they're just out screwing around.
No, I was the first one. I was the first of three.
Although you probably aren't too far off from Mark.
Yeah.
Mine was the important one.
See, there you go.
Now we're just having lunch.
There you go, that's it.
That's pretty fun to make its three hours.
Where did John go?
Probably go check on Mark.
Oh, okay. I say as soon as John gets back, we'll just start.
Do you want me to do the NINA slides? I mean, there's only a few, we can just skip over them.
You know, I, I think it'd be good, uh, cause we gave a intro to E and P, but I think it'd be good to get a perspective from somebody who's actually worked on the,
Yeah.
On the questions.
I mean, I just got these slides the other day, actually, so.
Okay.
These are new to me.
Okay.
We'll all be seeing them for the first time.
That's right, you'll be, you'll all be learning.
Yay.
I just pulled, I just pulled out about half of them. That just seemed a little redundant, but. I hope I got enough battery here. Cause I did not pack my charger.
Uh-oh. Mark, do you wanna give your microphone a little test there? Make sure we can, people on webcast can hear us.
Testing, eight, 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 one.
Oh, you got a switch? It's on, it's on front. There you go.
Oh.
Hello.
Testing one, two, three, ten, one.
Yeah, it's fine.
Good.
Val or Ed, could you hear that? What little there was?
One, two, three, four, test one, two.
No, didn't you help? We didn't get allowed.
It's all broken up.
It says, yes, it sounds fine.
Someone do what you're doing.
Well, sorry for the late start. Um, as, as you know, we've been having these sessions at the Weld County Regional Communication Center. And we have some of the students out today at another class, and we have some of the students today in dealing with an emergency because their radios are down. So, uh, we were trying to see how many people we could actually get in here. But I do wanna thank Mark Fletcher, uh, for being with us today. Mark is with Avaya. And Mark, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you tell your own bio because you'll, you'll know it better than me, I'm sure. Uh, but I do know that you've done a lot of work with, um, with the NINA Institute Board, uh, with writing E and P questions for the certification tests, so you should know this material probably better than anybody who's taught the classes so far. And, uh, and you've done a lot of work with, um, 112 in, in the European Union. Anything else you wanna add?
Yeah, so, uh, Mark Fletcher, everyone calls me Fletch. The only one that calls me Mark is my mother and people I owe money to. But, um, yeah, I work, uh, I, I work on the NINA Institute Board, which is the proctor of, of this E and P exam, uh, the Body of Knowledge. I am the co-vice chair on the ENA, the European NG 112. So that's an organization that's very much in alignment with the US. Also, I'm on the, the APCO Standards Development Committee where we're looking at, you know, standards for public safety as well. So I'm kind of the, the public safety cheerleader at Avaya. Um, that's my role there, and I watch over the product set to make sure that we've got the features and functionalities to, uh, to make public safety move forward. E and Ps are, are very, I think, you know, a big asset to the industry. And NINA puts a lot behind that. Oh, that's not working. There you go. So really, what, what the E and P exam does, um, it certifies, it, it, the Emergency Number Professional is just that. You're a professional in this industry. It's a certification level that recognizes you for the work that you do, for the knowledge that you have. It shows that, uh, it's not an easy test to take. It's difficult, but it's not impossible to pass. But it really shows the comprehensive knowledge base and it really helps raise those standards, um, to the industry, to your peers, and to other people to show that you are in a profession and you're a leader, a thought leader in public safety. So I think it's really important. We established what we call the Comprehensive Body of Knowledge for Emergency Number Professionals. And that promotes a, a standard level of competence across. There's a lot of questions that get reviewed every year. There are, um, not trick questions, but there are distractor answers that if you don't read the question properly, you could be distracted by that. You know, and they're there not to stump the chump, so to speak. They're there to make sure you're thinking in the, in the right model. And, you know, that you have awareness. This year, there are four testing periods. We just finished up the summer exam. Twenty-two new E and Ps were just added, uh, the other week. You guys are in the fall session where the test date will be October fourth through the eighteenth. That'll be the testing period. And then one over the winter of, uh, twenty fifteen in January seventeenth. That's coming up. The test itself will have fifty percent operations-based questions and fifty percent, uh, E nine-one-one management. The idea is it's, um, it includes things like legislation, management of employees, HR, management of the organization. It's really designed to cover the entire gamut. So if you're an Emergency Number Professional, you really know the business. It is different than the CMCP. CMCP is a little bit more involved from a management perspective, um, in a little more in-depth. It's okay to do both, um, but really I think everybody who is in the industry should have at a minimum their E and P. It just shows that you're serious about your profession. You know, a sample question is here. A consolidated Public Safety Answering Point, or PSAP, provides communications for A, B, C, and D. More than one area code, a local government entity, more than one agency or department, or one emergency service EMS provider. So you've got one very correct answer there and three others that are distractors. And if you think about, you know, what that is, it's obvious that the answer is C. One, more than one agency or department. When you get down to, you know, when you really pull the question apart. So that's an example of what they are. Some study tips for when you take the exam. You really need to review, take the sample tests, and understand where your weaknesses are. The first time I took the exam, uh, when I took the sample exams, I found out that one particular area was a weak spot for me. I was able to study up on that and I passed with a great grade. When I came back from my recertification, I decided to take the test again. Um, I had the points for recert, but I took the test a second time because it had been four years. And there were new things with next generation nine-one-one on the test. I wanted to make sure I understood those. And on the practice exams, a whole nother area of knowledge. At that time, it was HR functions was my weak spot. So I was able to study up on that particular area. And again, you know, when those questions came up on the exam, I went right through them with no problem. And I ended up doing even better than I had the first time around. First time around, I was in the high eighties. The second time, I was in the low nineties. So, you know, those tips, the study guides, the groups, going through the manual, those are all important things. And if you do that, um, and, and do study, you know, the test is difficult, but it's not impossible to pass. The exam itself is one hundred and fifty multiple choice questions. It is a proctored exam, so you will go to a testing center. We use Professional Testing Center, PTC, to administer the tests. And the passing score is one oh five or better. You will find out at the end of the test, before you leave the testing facility, if you passed or failed. You'll actually get your passing or failing grade in the mail several weeks later, but you will know that day. And I can tell you, both times I took the test, I walked out of there and I had no idea if I had passed or failed. And to me, that's the indication of a good test. It's really testing your knowledge. Whoops, going backwards here. There is a fee associated with the exam, and some of that is because we actually have, NINA actually has to pay the testing facility to do that. From an employment perspective, you'll see a lot of employers looking for E and P certification now. And we've seen actually higher salaries being, you know, gained if you have your E and P certification. So, again, uh, when you have that, why become an E and P? It does get you extra benefits. You do have NINA program discounts, um, special programs for E and Ps. You can use the E and P designation, which will get you a lot of respect. I tell everybody, you get the most respect from other E and Ps or people that have been through the exam. But it does get you, uh, a little respect. So, um, you know a little bit about me. Um, you know, I was actually a dispatcher back in the eighties when I first got out of high school. So this is me on Mids circa nineteen eighty-two, you know, and, uh.
Really?
Yeah.
Does that really picture you?
And that's, yeah, that's me. And this is me on meds in twenty fourteen. So I started out in a one-seat PSAP. Um, we didn't even have nine-one-one back then, but we handled three towns. And it was just, you know, Spartan Police, hello, police, fire, and medical for three towns. I went back into that center. A good friend of mine, Andy Smetana, runs that center today. Started at the same time I did. And although they've got a, a four-position PSAP with six positions that they staff for, the job hasn't really changed. They're still there, the phone rings, people on the other end are looking for help, and they've got to establish the resources to get them that help. Now, they've got more computers, they've got more technology to do that, but the job in itself hasn't really changed. They're there to answer the phone, figure out what people need and where they are and, you know, what they can do to help them, and then dispatch the appropriate resources. So it's interesting to see where that change has been and where it's really just the technology and how people are reaching out. So, um, we've got a small enough group here. Um, how about we hear who you people are?
I'm Trey Bujan. I'm the Public Safety JS Analyst for Weld County.
Okay.
John Moensford. I'm the Program Manager for Weld County.
Okay.
And I'm Bertha Ramos, and I'm one of the supervisors.
Okay, great. And everybody else is fixing the radio problem. Or else we would have more. Well, great, well, welcome. So this is the, uh, this session is the study group on MLTS PBX, VSP, and Wireless. And then we'll cover databases in a, in a separate section after a break. So what is an MLTS PBX? The NINA definition, and if you, you actually download, um, the, the NINA glossary, which is a great reference because, you know, everything is just full of acronyms in this industry and it's, it's totally ridiculous. But their definition is a system comprised of common control units, telephone sets, control hardware and software, and adjunct systems used to support the capabilities outlined herein. This includes network and premise-based systems, Centrix VoIP, as well as PBX hybrid key telephone systems, classified by the FCC under Part sixty-eight, and includes systems owned or leased by governmental agencies, nonprofit entities, as well as for-profit businesses. Okay, yeah, great. My explanation, PBXs are phone systems, okay? There are systems where I've got a lot of phones in a building and I've got a group of trunks or phone lines that service those phones. They're shared, it's a shared pool of resources. And you can dial internally from station to station, typically on a short three or four-digit call code. And, um, you can dial typically a nine for an access line to make an outside call. You'll be connected to one of those trunks and your call will go out to the public switch telephone network. Now, the, the important thing are the last two things. When you make that phone call from an MLTS, what is sent as the caller ID is very different from system to system. It depends on how the system is programmed, depends on the capabilities of the system. It actually depends even on the trunk type that you're using. So it could be anything, and that's why MLTS is such a problem for nine-one-one. Because you may not send a unique caller ID for every telephone device. Whereas obviously in the residential world, everybody has a telephone number, right? And everybody's got a unique number based on their residence. So this is why MLTS is the big problem. So when we look at really kind of how this works, you can see that you've got all of these individual phones with individual numbers behind the PBX. And then we have a group of trunks, and each one of those phone lines has a unique number to it because it is a telephone line. Now, when we make the nine-one-one call, again, depending on the programming and depending on the trunk type that's used and a lot of other stuff, I could send the individual station number as the caller ID. The PBX may send the trunk number. Because some of these numbers may not actually be dialable public telephone numbers, right? Not every phone may have its own phone number. When the call goes into the telco network, regardless of what I send, whether it was my individual station number or a trunk number was applied, the telco can actually overwrite what the PBX has sent. And they will in a lot of cases. And they'll claim that they do that so they can guarantee that it's a good number going to the nine-one-one center. Well, it's a good number from their database perspective, but they may be overwriting important data that's being, you know, sent by the PBX. That number may be indicative of a specific environment within the PBX. And if they overwrite that number, now the nine-one-one center kind of loses all of their visibility into what's happening here. So a PBX could be a single building covering multiple stations. It could be a campus environment that covers multiple buildings. Those buildings could all have different addresses. In some large campuses, the buildings don't even have an address. They're private streets. So that's a large problem that you have in the nine-one-one databases, even today. You've got buildings with no street address or a street address that really isn't representative of that building. The same problem can happen on campus environments, business campuses, or even college campuses. And then you've got what we call a distributed architecture. So you have, um, a business will have a main core facility somewhere, and they may have five or six buildings around town that aren't even on the same property. And they're providing telephone service to all of those buildings, right? So if the, if the billing, if the telephone number for the main facility is what's transmitted, that's what's gonna show up in the alley database, not the, the building that's across town. I work at home. I'm forty-seven miles away from the building where my number is registered to. But in reality, the telephone system that I'm attached to is actually right out here in Highlands Lakes, or Highlands Ranch. And the trunks that are used when I make an outside phone call are in a data center in Ohio. And none of that is attached to the nine-one-one network in New Jersey. So that's problematic when I make a nine-one-one call. And we have to do some additional things to route that call properly. We actually have to use a specialized service to send the nine-one-one calls so they can get them into the proper network. So part of this is just implementation on the PBX side. People aren't aware of the problem, so they don't deploy the right mechanisms. And at the end of the day, you guys end up getting phone calls that say one thing, but mean something completely different. And this is where call takers get phone calls from the Philippines and Guam and Hawaii. We've all heard those stories. Or, you know, some other state. And what are you gonna do with that? You don't even have the ability of transferring that call. So this is where the problem is. The PS alley database, which is the private switch alley database, it's an addition onto your normal alley database. So your regular alley database was designed really for your residences and your fixed lines. The PS alley database is kind of, uh, an iteration of, of alley that was designed for businesses to be able to update the alley information with specific record data about their individual telephones. And for the most part, PS alley adds in a twenty-character field, address line two. There's, there's a couple of fields in there that the enterprise business has access to. And PS alley really gets misused. It's there, it can help, but the problem with PS alley is that the business still has to make an investment in something that's going to keep those records updated. Those records still have to be submitted into those databases. And at the end of the day, for the, for full intensive purposes, they've got twenty characters that they can put in there. And a lot of people think, well, that's great. Fletcher sits at Cube two C two thirty-one. I'm gonna put that information. But when you get a nine-one-one call and you get the street address and building, does Cube two C two thirty-one really mean anything to you? Well, you know, and that's where the problem is. So while it can provide additional information, you have to be careful about what that information is. It doesn't really mean anything. So that's where, um, PSAPs really need to educate businesses as to what data is in there. And maybe fourth floor northwest corner is a more appropriate piece of information to put in there, right? So, and again, there, there are other ways that you can accomplish the end result here that are kind of outside the scope of the E and P exam for right now, so. But I, I'd encourage you to do your research on that, just to, to fix the problem. But this is out there, and this is, this is a question, these are questions on the exam. What is PS alley and what does it do? Again, if it's used and it's used correctly, it, it can be a good solution. Unfortunately, most of the time, it's not used correctly, so same old adage, garbage in, garbage out, right? The NINA model legislation, um, which was published several times over the past decade and updated, was there to define a legislative template for the various states to follow when they're building their PBX laws. There are eighteen states that have MLTS legislation right now. Actually, Colorado is, is one of those states. But most of the states have very poor legislation. Because again, they were designed without, um, consulting public safety and technology folks in identifying the problem and fixing the problem. So Colorado says that any telephone has to have the same services afforded to a normal telephone. And, uh, if you have to dial an access code to make a nine-one-one call, it's gotta be labeled and placarded on the phone. That's pretty much what the Colorado law says. Okay, um, addresses some of the issues, but doesn't really fix a lot of the problems. So the model legislations have, have been rewritten. Right now, they're, they're focusing on fire alarm zones as the reporting level of granularity. Regardless of what the building size is or how many people are in the area, um, the old mechanism was X amount of square footage. So the new rule of thumb is a fire alarm zone. Because fire alarm zones take into consideration the number of employees in an area, the number of ingress and egresses, the use of the area, things like hazardous material storage. And it just makes sense as a starting point for fire alarm zones. They're smaller managed areas that public safety is probably already reviewed from a fire marshal's perspective. And if you know that it's in that area of the building, and if you have things like onsite notification, then, you know, people are aware of where the nine-one-one call is taking place. So that's really the bulk of, of what the model legislation is. And it uses this zone-based approach where we take a phone number, an unused vacant phone number out of the range of numbers that we own, and we apply a phone number to a specific zone in the building. And that phone number is called an ELIN or Emergency Location Identification Number. It's a regular phone number. Nothing special about it, other than it represents a specific zone in the building. And the whole idea behind that is I could have fifty phones in that area of the building. When a nine-one-one call is placed from any of those devices, instead of sending their number, they send that ELIN number as their caller ID. That goes through the selective routers. When that hits your PSAP, you do a dip on that ELIN, and that's where it comes back, one twenty-three Main Street, fourth floor, northwest corner, whatever you wanna call that specific zone. Now you've got better situational awareness of where that is in the building. So when you, when your first responders show up, we had a nine-one-one call, fourth floor, northwest corner. Yep, here's where it is. And hopefully, they are aware of it as well and know that you're coming. So they can get the elevator hold, held in the elevator. But again, that's the idea, because, and then when a phone moves from one area to the other, I don't have to worry about that phone number and updating that telephone number's record. Because that telephone number, the number of that station, never shows up at nine-one-one. When they move to a new area, if they make a nine-one-one call, now they'll send this number, this ELIN. They move to this area, they'll send that ELIN. So the ELINs are defined one time in the nine-one-one database, in the alley database. And when that number shows up, you've got the same location. Get the idea behind that? So we remove the onus from having to manage each individual station and where that phone actually sits in what building. Now, when you have a building of five thousand people, this can really become a problem. So deploying this allows businesses to set up their nine-one-one and then kind of let it maintain itself as things move along. and then kind of let it maintain itself as things move along. Yeah, question?
The last time I looked at the model legislation, it was still based on square footage. Do you know of any states that have adopted this?
California is actually the first state to do, use the language of fire alarms. So that's pending, it's going to go into effect later this year. Every state prior to that has used square footage. But again, that's the problem, Darryl. Square footage is a bad idea. Because ten thousand square foot in this building, you know, just by the little bit I walk through, ten thousand square feet, I wouldn't know where to go. But I've been in buildings where twenty thousand square feet is a wide open area. So square footage doesn't work. Right? I mean, I was, I've been in, one big financial customer, it's got a hundred and ten thousand square foot trading floor with fifteen hundred traders, stock traders. You walk in that room, and where you walk in is like a raised balcony, you can see the whole floor. That's all you need to know, right? Go to the trading floor. In this building, wow, you know, I walk in, there's hallways. This is a rat's maze. You know, so you need very specific information. Or someone needs to be aware that the call is happening and ultimately meet public safety. So that's language that we're soliciting right now. Got to be careful, because that's, you know, this is about what's on the test. That's not on the test. What's on the test is the model legislation. But we're looking at constantly enhancing that to see where it makes the most sense.
Thank you.
Yep, any other questions? This is an area that most of the tests will have questions on. Understanding this concept of an ELIN. And really, you can equate that to phase one, phase two from a cellular, right? You're getting a number that's representative of the tower or the sector initially. And actually, you know, then you're querying for, or rebidding for more detailed information. But if you think about phase one, each tower and each sector has a number, and regardless of what device carrier you're using, you get that sector number reporting. It's kind of the same idea. Except the enterprises have a little more control over what they can do with that. So, but again, I, both times that I took the test, there were detailed questions on this functionality. So it's something that you should definitely study up on. One thing that a lot of people get confused on is voice over IP. And voice over IP is mentioned on the exams. And there are a lot of call takers that actually think, if you've got a voice over IP telephone, it's a problem for voice over IP going into the 911 center. But in fact, the telephone technology, whether it's an analog phone, digital phone, or an IP phone, the technology on that phone behind an MLTS doesn't make any difference to the 911 call. The IP phone is problematic for the business because the phones can move in the building on their own without what we call administrative notice. You know, a user can pick it up and move it. All of a sudden, that phone is moved, and the 911 characteristics of that phone may not have been updated properly. That's why they're problematic. From a 911 center perspective, it doesn't make a difference what that device is. When the call enters the public switch telephone network, it's got a telephone number assigned to it, and it's going to be routed appropriately. So don't get confused. There are some questions on the exam about voice over IP phones in residential services like Vonage. And we'll talk about that, but that's a completely different model. Wireless and cellular 911, and we talked about that a little bit, but it's really because of the dynamic and roaming behavior of those devices that the telephone number TN really can't be tied to a specific location. My cellphone right now has got a New Jersey number on it. I'm in Colorado. That number doesn't mean anything to Colorado. Cellular, every tower has three sectors on it. And they cover a hundred and twenty-degree radius of the compass. That's how cellular technology is built. Each one of these sectors on the tower has a telephone number associated with it. This is back in phase one. So each one of these numbers is a unique number, and every 911 call is associated with that telephone number. It has, like every other phone number in the alley database, its own alley record that says cell tower, sector. And you probably get a latlon, did you get a latlon in phase one of the tower?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. That's the information. This is called an ASRD, or an emergency services routing digit. That's all you get. You have to identify it. There's no phase one, there's no mechanism for phase one in this, or for phase two, I should say. In order to get phase two, we use another term called an ESRK, or an emergency services routing key. And what's different with the emergency services routing key is there's actually a pool of these numbers that are assigned at the carrier and PS app level. So when a 911 call shows up at the tower, it gets assigned one of these pseudo ANI numbers. And that's what actually gets displayed to the PS app. And then that record is tied back to location in the cellular database. And when you do the ANI query, or alley query on that PANI record, you're actually pulling what's called a shell record in the alley database. And that acts a little bit differently than a normal alley record. Instead of being a record that's there with information, it's a steering record. When it's pulled, it goes back to the mobile service provider and pulls in, in real time, the location information, the X, Y coordinates, and all the other information that the mobile service provider provides. And that's what you then get back. So I put this on a diagram because this is really fairly complex. And again, a lot of the tests cover this, so it's important that you understand the flow of this technology. So again, just to walk through it, my pointer's not going to show up on the screen there. But a call hits the tower when the wireless subscriber dials 911. And the wireless network, I'm going to hit a cell tower, it's going to deliver my call to what's called the MSC, or the Mobile Service Center. At that point, the Mobile Service Center is going to send the Mobile Positioning Center, or MPC, information. I just had Fletch show up on this sector, on this tower, with this callback number. That's my New Jersey two oh one number. The MPC, the Mobile Positioning Center, is going to grab an available pseudo ANI, or PANI, record and assign it to my call event. And it's going to provide the MSC with that PANI. Okay, I know Fletcher on this sector with this callback number is associated with this PANI. Go ahead and continue your routing. The MSC then sends the call down to the selective router. Now, that PANI is specific to that sector on that tower, and it will be steered appropriately to the right PS app that's responsible for that sector. In the meantime, the MPC, the Mobile Positioning Center, is querying the other antennas, querying the device for GPS. It's doing its job to find the device. And when it finds that information, it actually has kind of an alley database, or it's a location database, where all of that information is held. And the reference key on that piece of information is the PANI. So now I've got a unique phone number that references me, that the PS app has, and I've got a unique phone number with a reference in that MPC database. Now, at the PS app, when you dip into the carrier alley with that PANI, it's steered back over to the MPC. The information is extracted, sent back to the PS app, and that's where you then get the display up on your screen. That's the call flow. This is important to understand. This is, there's a lot of this on the test. This is how phase two works. This is, in addition to wireless, this is also very important with other types of location discovery that I'll show you in a second here. So it's important that you understand this flow and this interaction, and really, this dynamic link into the databases. Now, the reason that this has to be this way is because there is no intelligent link between point A and point B. Alls I've got is analog camera trunks. And that's why we have to go through hoops, you know, doing and getting this data. A VSP, voice over IP service provider. These are carriers like Vonage and home broadband voice over IP providers. Shaking your head, oh my God, what a nightmare, right? So the problem is, are their subscribers or their customers are sitting all over the country, everywhere. And they can move their devices at free will, which is the problem. Those services have large points of presence, or what we call POPs, typically in the major cities. So, you know, they're going to have a POP in LA, they'll have a POP in New York City. And that's where they physically attach their network to the public switch telephone network. So if I launch a 911 call out of their New York City POP, the call is going to end up at the New York City 911 center. 911, how you doing? Or LA, 911, oh my God. Sorry.
Sorry.
I'm not me either, so those are safe jokes. But this is a problem, because LA or New York cannot do anything for a caller in Texas, or a caller in Nevada, or a caller in Michigan, or a caller in Illinois. They have no connectivity to those 911 networks. So this is where a VPC provider, or voice over IP provider, voice over IP positioning center, is critical to allow these services to function. What the VPC provider provides is an overlay network across the US. And the VPC providers, the tier one carriers behind this, are entrado, bandwidth level three, and TCS. And what they do is they provide connectivity to every 911 selective router across the country, or ninety-nine point some percent of them. There are probably, I think there are a few 911 centers out in the Midwest, like on Indian reservations, that are still problematic from connectivity perspective. And they've barely got 911 out there, let alone, you know, connectivity. But for the most part, these carriers can service every 911 center in North America, Canada, and even Mexico. So the carriers, these people can now touch the VPC networks through IP. And they can get their callers into this network. And this is where, based on the calling line ID, or the telephone number, they can steer the call to the right selective router network. And when it hits that record, the regular alley stuff works just like any other call. Going back into the VPC database, now going back two slides, that, three, no, two slides. Sorry. That is where this becomes Vonage now. Same mechanism that the cellular network uses with that dynamic PANI. That's where the VSPs can also use that to dip into, or the PS apps can use that to dip into that national 911 database. So that's pretty much how everything works. Aren't you glad you came in now? Any questions?
Got a question.
Sure.
I forget the acronym. But for the MLTS or PBX systems,
Yeah.
is that not essentially a PANI that's in the MSA, or does it come from PS alley?
The ELIN you're talking about.
ELIN, yes.
So the ELIN, the ELIN is designed to be a number that the business owns.
Yeah.
So it's not a PANI. The business can choose to use PANIs instead of those numbers. So there are services that will provide that functionality to businesses through a PANI-type service. The business has to pay for each one of those PANIs now. So sometimes it is less expensive, sometimes it's more expensive.
That service would then maintain the entry of the TN?
Yeah, that service maintains the TN.
Okay, so it's more cumbersome potentially?
It really depends. I mean, I've had customers where that model actually worked out better. And I've had it be more expensive or less expensive, and there was a PAA factor, pain in the butt. So they put a value on that and said, you know what, it costs a little bit more, but I don't have to deal with it. I'm paying a little bit that I cost. Those PANIs are only a buck fifty a month, typically. When you have ten, that's easy. When you got ten thousand, that gets to be a big number. So people say, well, you know what, I'll do an ELIN, which is effectively a PANI. But now they have control. What they don't have control is the update in the alley record. But the idea is, the alley record never has to be updated. This phone number is the first floor, northwest corner. That stays that way, that never changes. And that's why the ELIN approach works.
Now, you said the ELIN is usually, they can use PANI for the ELIN.
They can.
But it's typically a number that they actually own, so it depends.
Yeah, I've never, I've never seen an ELIN, because the ELIN is what the PBX sends.
Okay.
So the PBX, so when you're buying a service from a company that's using PANIs on their side, the business typically would never know, or see, or even be guaranteed they have the same PANI. Because that's coming out of a dynamic pool usually. So the PBX would not even want to have knowledge of that, because they would have to know what it is ahead of time. It could be, but I would never see it happening that way.
But typically, an ELIN then, will that, when they get the call at their console, will it show up as the callback number?
Well, here's the thing. What we make, what we promote as best practices is to make that ELIN ring at a central position that's going to be answered. So this is, this particular piece is not on the E and P exam. So let me say, you won't find this question. So let me make this clear. This is, this is my view on best practices. This is not a NINA E and P view. When we provision ELINs, we recommend to customers, if you've got a building and you're using ten ELINs, we tell you, them to make all of those ELINs ring at a central location. Because if I have passed out on the floor a callback to my device, regardless of how you get there, on my number, an ELIN number, whatever, calling me back doesn't do any good. I'd rather have you ring at a security position or someone that knows that I've dialed 911 and can be assisting me locally. Now, that's my view. There are other people in the industry that believe that every call, regardless, should go back to regardless, should go back to the device that nades. Okay, you know, that's.
The problem with that though is that that device might be, there's not a direct number to that device.
Might not be a direct number to that device. You know, if this room caught on fire, I'm not hanging around waiting for a callback.
Right.
You know, if I passed out, I'm on the floor. I look at it this way, if you're disconnected from the device and you need to call back, you need more information. Calling back a device, if a device gets disconnected inadvertently, it's either failed because of the emergent event, or it failed because I've passed out. Either way, you're not getting back to who called 911. I'd rather guarantee you get back to someone that's gonna answer the phone. That's my personal opinion. You know, now, we're championing that as a NINA best practice, but that is not NINA's position. Let me make that clear. Because if I don't, everybody who disagrees with me will be shaking their finger. But again, that, you know, minimizes the number of ELINS that you need for a building. Good question though.
Any other questions for Fletcher? I have a question for the students. He was talking about PANI earlier with regards to wireless. You know, when you get a wireless call from 911 and it shows up on your screen in there, you see two numbers, don't you? And one of those numbers is, I guess this isn't a question, I'm just kind of explaining. One of those numbers you can call back, and the other one you can't. That number that you can't is part of that shell record that Fletcher's talking about.
Yeah.
It's a pseudo ANI, it's a fake phone number basically, just to create a record for that cell tower.
And if you do call, it actually comes back to us?
Yeah.
Oh, does it go back to you?
Yeah.
Well, that would make sense, right? Because, you know, that's what the selective router's sending it to.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are steering records. Those are just there to get the call to you with a unique ID that you could query to give additional information. So you probably have 20-digit ANI delivery here. So you'll actually get the PANI and the callback number in the alley spill, in the ANI spill, as it's coming in.
We get above that, but we follow the NINA. Thirty, I can't remember what the standard is.
Right. But yeah, so the current NINA standard is 20-digit ANI delivery. So you're getting both of those in there. But yeah, what, so PANI is not, is a non-dialable, is a routable but non-dialable number.
Okay, well, I hope everybody remembered from the last session that today is a double session, so we're gonna take a little bit of a break. And then we'll be back. And those of you on the webcast, we'll just quit and keep the webcast open, and we'll see you back in, what'd you say, Fletcher, about 10, 15 minutes?
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
So one bit of trivia question for you. What happens if somebody does, what happens if the public calls that PANI number?
It still comes to us.
It still does.
Comes to you, what do you see on your screen?
The information from the tower.
Do you?
I think so. It'd be whatever's, I don't know.
So I read that you should, you're supposed to get a no-record found.
No. Kind of a trap.
Yeah.
Or no, you know what, I'm sorry, that's wrong, that's wrong. What I read was, if somebody dialed the actual telephone number of the trunk.
Oh, yes.
Coming in.
We do get that, because.
You get a no-record found.
It's a pilot number.
It's a pilot number.
Yep. Yeah, we do get that.
Okay, but yeah, somebody could dial the PANI. Those are not supposed to be routable. I'm surprised that you can actually dial those.
I've called the wrong number back before.
Interesting, okay. Learned something, you learn something every day. Okay, great. Just in time for the break.
Oh, nice.
Hey, that works. The readers didn't like us today.
All right, okay, great.
Thanks, everybody, and again, we'll be back in about 10, 15 minutes.